Well, welcome. I want to welcome everyone once again to the first school committee meeting of the new school year. Welcome back. I hope everyone had a nice summer. We'll begin with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
And before we get started tonight, I would, I just ask people to observe an additional moment of silence. This is, of course, September 11th, and we remember the victims of that day in 2001. And it was interesting to me, thinking that we don't, we hardly have any students left in our district that were, were born prior to September 11, 2001. We graduated our first class of eighteen-year-olds, born in the post-9/11 era, just this past May. So we want to keep that remembrance going for those that have been born since. So join me in a moment. Thank you. Well, tonight's meeting is being broadcast live by Boston City TV on YouTube, as well as Comcast Channel 24, RCN Channel 13, and FiOS Channel 1962. It will also be rebroadcast at a later date. We have interpretation services available this evening in Spanish. Will the Spanish interpreter please rise and introduce yourself en español? Gracias. And for those of you who are joining us after a summer hiatus, we do want to note that interprets, interpretation services will be a permanent feature of our school committee meetings going forward. Typically, we've only asked for interpretive services in advance when we know that we'll have folks needing interpretation services, typically larger meetings around the budget. But we felt it pertinent to increase access for all members of our community to have interpretive services here on a regular basis. And if there are other languages that are in need of interpretation, please reach out and let us know. If you'd like to sign up for public comment tonight, please see our staff person, Ms. Lena Parvex, in the hallway. Sign up for both public comment periods. We'll close at 6:30 PM. We'll begin with the approval of the minutes from the July 17th committee meeting, as well as the August 28th school committee retreat. If minutes are approved as presented, hard copies will be made, made available immediately in the hallway with the other handouts. And if changes are made, you can access the minutes tomorrow on the website. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the July 17th and August 28th meetings as presented. Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Sounds like a second from the vice chair. Any objection to approving the minutes, excuse me, is there any discussion or objection to the motion first? Any objection to approving the minutes by unanimous consent? Hearing none, the minutes are approved. We'll move on now to the superintendent's report. I present to you our superintendent, Dr. Brenda Feselius.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Very excited to be here and report to you a little bit about start of school. But first, I also want to just give a remembrance to 9/11. And I remember my dad was an airline pilot. And so I remember when he called me that morning. It was the only time I ever heard him cry. He was very shaken by that event and never the same after. So, and in remembrance of my dad, who has now passed away, I often remember 9/11. So we had an incredible week last week, as you know, all of you. We had a wonderful, wonderful week. I'd like to just give a brief update around the first days of school, some of the positives, and then a few of the, the hairy things that we're working on still. And give you a little bit of update on what we're doing there with transportation. But all in all, just really proud to be superintendent of this district and proud to be, and proud to be working with all of the great teachers and school leaders here in Boston Public Schools. So, anyway, and then I will go through the rest of the presentation focused mostly on the strategic planning and the goals, and then give the, have Monica come up and talk about the Hundred Day Plan more publicly. We had a chance to go through that in a working session a few weeks ago, and, and now I'd like to just do that here and share with the public what we'll be doing and have our published schedule out so that you can participate and that the public can participate in those town halls. All right. And so first day of school, we have some photos, I think, of the first day of school, and Xavier's here to help us with that, to give you a sense of all the joy that we were bringing with the juice. We visited the Burke School with the mayor and with Randy Weigarten and BTU President Jessica Tang. And Randy is from the American Federation of Teachers, was our guest. She chose Boston Public Schools to come and spend her first day school with. So we felt very honored with that and also very honored to have the mayor join us. We also were able to go to the Conley School, Linden School, Snowden, the Shaw, and the Taylor. And we just really enjoyed talking to teachers, getting to talk to the students at those schools, and be toured by students and telling us their points of pride and what they loved about their school. And it was just a great experience. Then we were also at the Roosevelt Lower the next day, or actually with the kindergarteners this past Monday. And the mayor was there as well as you, Mr. Chair. We appreciate having you along as well. And we also had a few of you on some of our first day visits as well. So thank you for coming to those as well with us. I do want to acknowledge, however, even though we had wonderful, joyful learning environments for children to come in, we did have several transportation issues that first day. And I sent out several robocalls to our parents to communicate with them and be as transparent as I could about the trouble we were having, and trying to work through those issues one by one, and some cases, and some cases, school by school, to ensure that our buses were working and that we were able to get them out. I actually showed up at the yard two days for the standby bid to make sure that was going off, and convened a group with the bus drivers as well to talk with them. And they've been terrific in this process, trying to problem-solve with us and collaborate with us, as well as the bus monitors and our transportation office, doing an all-hands-on-deck, trying to resolve some of these issues. And so I appreciate all of the effort that's gone on. It's still not where we want it to be. And I want to be very transparent about that. We still have work to do. And I think we're going to have to do a deep dive in looking at the systems, at our routing systems, at our contracting with TransDev, as well as our communication systems and how we're responding to parents. And so I commit to the public to do that in a very methodological way, and, and make sure that we get to the bottom of it so that we don't repeat it next year. We did have some good media on the first day of school, local sit-down interviews. I, I don't think I've ever done that many interviews in a row, even when I was commissioner. There was quite a bit of interviews on TV as well as radio. I was on the Matty in the Morning Show, and I think I got more comments about being on the Matty Show. Like, maybe all I have to say is that that's a cool station to be on, and then all of a sudden I get replayed on the Matty Show. So I think I'll call him up again and see if I can't be on every week and build that goodwill out there on the Matty Show. Also was on the Carson and Kennedy Show as well. So that was really a pleasure to be able to talk with folks on the media and be able to get out there and share our story. We also did some door-knocking, and that is what our re-engagement center has been doing for years. And we just have expanded it now. And we will have it be quarterly in order to go out and improve our re-engagement with our youth who have disengaged in our schools and show with, and show them the opportunities. I wasn't able to meet with the actual students on my list, but I was able to meet with a second grader and talk to her about graduating in ten years. Or I was able to talk with two moms who were there, who were sisters of the student I was going to meet, and re-engage them and talk with them about opportunities and, and share with them my personal story of being a single mom, and, and encourage them. And so it was, I said, with every door-knock was an opportunity to make an impact, regardless of if it was a student I was there, or connecting with a parent and giving them resources, or connecting them to the re-engagement center. And so that was just such a wonderful experience. And I'm, I'm really looking forward to partnering with some of our other partners to get even more of us out there knocking and, and getting our kids back. Today, actually, I did a interview with HLN, talking about the mayor's program with the city and with Boston Saves. And such a great program. It was all here before I came. Like I said on my interviews, there's so much here already that's great about Boston and about Boston Public Schools. And we just need to get the word out. And I'm glad to have had a national audience today about a program that gives children a pathway to aspiring to being able to afford college. Because a lot of children, like me, when I was little, I had a blue savings book. And it was pretty cool to have my own little savings book and know that I was already banked, you know, and could save money. And that, that to me, it makes a difference. And we know through research that children who get, get banked early on and have a savings account are three times more likely to go to college and four times more likely to finish. So it's, this is a very worthy effort, and I hope to expand it, as all of you know in my moonshot from the interview process. So I'm going to go through some of the strategic plan and highlights that we went through. Obviously, goal one is improve student outcomes. That's our number one aspirational goal, is that we have better outcomes for our students, all our students, and equitable outcomes for our students. So as I give my reports, this is going to be how I structure my reports to the strategic plan. So you know what the strategic actions are and some of the data points underneath them. I'll be brief because we went through some of these in the working session, but I'll give kind of an update to some of them with new data, given what we've been seeing through start of school. So for goal one, improve student outcomes, this one I'm super happy about. Our attendance rate is so high. So Evelyn, you and the students, you guys are getting it done, coming to school. So I'm really excited. On the first day, we had eighty percent attendance, which is the highest in six years. And then we went to eighty-three percent attendance on Friday. Monday was ninety point four, and today was ninety point six. So, ninety point six. So it's growing. So I'm going to start counting them in the days, you know, and hopefully we'll keep a steady everything over ninety percent, because that's what we want. We want our kids over ninety percent so that we don't have that chronic attendance. And so Sam DePina and his group in student support has really been working on a plan with the school leaders about how we follow up with kids that don't come regularly or have not come this first week, and absent five days, and then starting an SST process at school with our mental health professionals and our counselors, and trying to really ensure that students are here and on time every day. Then I already talked about the quarterly door-knocking. Our enrollment is, the late registrations still continue to come. So that's work we still want to work on so that families are registering earlier and getting to us. Our student registrations recently, since July 1, is 2,628, and 1,362 have transferred. So we want to try to create stability in our schools for, for students, and that's knowing our path, parents knowing the pathways and knowing their assignments. So I think that there's some work to do on the assignment side. And this is something that I'm hearing when I talk to parents and go out in communities around school choice and assignment and student transfer. And then there's some policies that I think we're going to need to unpack around, like eight-day policy in terms of transfer and some of those things. So we'll, I might be bringing some ideas to you because these are things that the parents in the community are bringing to me that are problematic for them. And so as we do the strategic planning, I'm going to, in my reports, bring back to you what I'm hearing from the community so that you can hear it too. Saturday registrations, we, we believe were successful, and, and that's why we're seeing increased attendance, because I think there was a greater awareness that school was starting on, on September 5. And so we think that that helped, and with the blasting of the, you know, having him on the MBTA and all of that was really good. By the way, we didn't have one incident on the MBTA that I'm aware of. And I talked with Steve Pofteco at the MBTA, and there's just no incidents that I'm aware of in, in terms of student transportation and the expansion of those passes. Accountability results will be released on September 24th. So you can anticipate us coming forward with a presentation on that. The DUCI had announced that that was the day that they'd be giving their determinations. And so we anticipate further information. So that's the goal one on student outcome, student outcomes. Goal two is improve school quality. I'm happy to report, we have, we are expanding our MyWay Cafes to sixty. So that's adding thirty new MyWay Cafes. We have about two or three coming on board about every week. So we're working with that implementation. I was able to see the pasta and meatballs just yesterday, and I wanted to eat them so badly. And that was, they looked really delicious. And the children said that they were really happy with the MyWay Cafes. We also have a wonderful partnership with GE. As you know, there's some, a pretty substantial grant that we have, still some focus on that around elementary science. So we're starting that deep work with Charles Grantson and the academic office. Increased student support, you know about the nurses and the mental health professionals? We are about halfway hired on our nurses. So we're pretty excited about that. It's, it's actually faster than what we, is required. So we're trying to get our nurses, a full nurse in every single school as soon as possible. Increased student support with our social workers as well. So we have additional social work and mental health professionals within our schools. And we're working on hiring all of those. As you may have heard, there was a giveaway of fifty laptops at the King School. This is the Internet Essentials Program with Comcast. We have a partnership with them, and they do this nationally. They've recently expanded their program. So I'm looking forward to digging deeper into access for all of our students for Wi-Fi, as well as their access to having technology and tools to close that digital divide right here in BPS. So we'll be working with Mark Racine and his group, and, and Charles, and the academic team about how do we integrate technology as a tool. I don't think that it's the savior to, to the achievement gap, but I do think that it is actually a tool for students to use, and they have to know how to use that in their learning to be able to progress. I want to also thank BSAC for their participation in the safety banners that we did. We, I had gone to an Orchard Garden meeting about the difficulties that they've been having with safety around their play, play yard and around their spaces. With the opioid crisis, this is a very complex problem. I met with the parents. And one of the ideas that we had was, you know, how you go through neighborhoods, and it says, "Drive like your children live here." And they had little kind of banners. And you just have this social consciousness. And with seventy percent of those folks who are using, not being from Boston, it seemed to me a good idea to remind them that this is actually a school and a place where our children play. And so we asked Elvis, who was my intern all summer from BSAC, to work with the BSAC students. And they designed this poster, banner, with our communications office and our family engagement office. And it was a great partnership with the school. And they put those up just, I believe, yesterday or the day before yesterday. And so if you get a chance on Melna's cat, Melna Cass?
Melina Cass.
Okay, got it. Melina Cass Boulevard, you can, or street or avenue?
Boulevard.
Boulevard. I know where it's at, though, because I'm from Roxbury. So I, I know I drive, I drive it, I drive it all the time. I just still have to learn the names of the streets. And this beautiful, beautiful, colorful, playful banners that will give a reminder to folks that those are our kids. So thank you for doing that. I hope you can see them on the, on the screen. And then goal three, strong district leadership. I'm going to be introducing some of our new leaders in just a moment. And so that's going to be coming up. But on our hiring, I'll give a hiring update because we do have diversity goals around our hiring. We have 273 external hires to the organization. Thirty-six point two six percent are people of color. And I can give you more, these are just quick for the start of school, but I'll give you more in-depth when we have our actual start-of-school update. So these are just quick for today, quick numbers. Our diversity-focused schools have made 159 hires, fifty-one point five seven of which identify as people of color. Seventy-nine teachers enrolls within the suitable professional capacity. And every year, we expect that this will drop. So this year, we had seventy-six. So it's fairly in sync where we were last year with our suitable professional capacity teachers. And they are teaching in their content, in their area of license, and they're integrated into our, into our school schedules. Goal four, effective resource allocation. Trans, I'll tell you what we've done with some of our transportation around resource allocation. We have additional drivers that were hired this summer. We hired additional standby drivers, additional support in the dispatch and phone lines. And we also then expanded our MBTA passes, seventh, grade seven and eight. Goal five, greater community investment. We are, obviously, Monica's going to share with us on the engagement tour, and just doing all of the school visits. Recently been in East Boston, and also Charlestown, meeting tomorrow. So those things are on the schedule. We also talked, I talked a little bit about the Boston Saves Program, where we have provided kindergartners fifty dollars each for their savings account. And so I shared just a little bit about that earlier. And now I would like to introduce some of our new leaders, if I could. So what I'm going to ask them to do is, I'm going to introduce you very briefly, and if you could stand, and then we can hold our applause for all of the new leaders. I'm only going to say one or two sentences about each. I could go on and on about each. But if you're here, I know some had family commitments. Just stand, and then at the end, we'll, we'll welcome you with a warm welcome of applause. So at Harriet A. Baldwin Early Learning Pilot Academy, we have Min Jen Taylor, who's the principal. Is Min Jen here? Okay, Ms. Taylor has been extraordinary instructional leader in the Brookline Early Education Program. And William Blackstone Elementary School, and we have Shama Daniels. Ms. Daniels has been educator in North Carolina for nearly twenty-five years and excited to relocate to Boston, just like me. Boston Teachers Union K-8 Pilot School, Kristin Leathers. Ms. Leathers has over a decade of experience in BPS as a teacher and teacher leader. And for many years, Ms., Ms., is it Leathers or Leathers?
Leathers.
Leathers, I'm sorry. Taught English Language Arts in English as a Second Language at Brighton High School. And Jeremiah E. Burke High School, Amakar Silva. He's the interim headmaster. Mr. Silva has been a BPS educator for over twenty-five years, all of them at the Burke. He's fluent and literate in five languages. That's pretty awesome. And been a second-language teacher. Sarah Greenwood K-8 School is Camila Hernandez. Ms. Hernan, okay. She's what?
She's still at school.
Oh, she's still at school, okay. Hopefully not waiting for a bus. Sometimes I have to give it to myself, right? You know, you have to be hard on yourself, too. Ms. Hernandez was born in Bogota, Columbia, and joined Greenwood Community as a first-grade teacher in 2010. James W. Henning, Henigan K-8 School, Tanya Woodard. Tanya is a BPS graduate, whose professional journey brought her to BPS and the Henigan in September of 2003. And over the past sixteen years, she's been serving as a fifth-grade teacher and acting assistant principal. Rafael Hernandez School, Carolina Brito. Last year, Ms. Brito has served as the principal of Boston Preparatory Charter School in Hyde Park, and traditionally, strategically staffing and monitoring progress for school-wide systems. Oliver Holmes Innovation School, Edvoret Brewster. Mr. Brewster spent eight years teaching humanities at the Frederick Pilot Middle School. And while at the Frederick, Mr. Brewster also served as teacher leader of the Instructional Leadership Team. And at the Hurley last year, Mr. Brewster also supported the school leader in developing and implementing and monitoring school strategic plan. The Joseph J. Hurley K-8 School, Bethy Verano. She, Bethy worked for BPS since 2013. And for the last three years, Ms. Verano served as assistant headmaster at Boston Latin School, leading the implement- leading the implementation of equity-related policies while serving as the primary administrator for students in grades nine through twelve. Mission Hill K-8, Jerilyn Bywater McLoughlin. Ms. McLoughlin was one of the founding teachers of the Mission Hill K-8 and has mentored teachers in early education instruction throughout that time. She's led pre-kindergarten classrooms at the Mission Hill K-8 for the past seven years. Mission Hill K-8, Janira Williams, co-teacher. Ms. Williams was most recently a third and fourth grade teacher at Mission Hill. She had a long, successful career in elementary education, haven't taught for the past seventeen years. Welcome. New Mission High School, Andrew Bott. Oh, everybody's like, here he is. Mr. Bott served over twenty years of experience in public education, most recently serving as superintendent of Brookline Public Schools. And Mr. Bott has an extensive experience working in BPS and was a school leader at three schools, Orchard Garden Schools, where he led a turnaround with comprehensive K-8 arts programming, music, visual arts, theater, dance, and media arts. Welcome back, or welcome home. William H. Orenberger School, John Travis. Mr. Travis was previously an award-winning math teacher in Woodbury, New Jersey, before beginning his tenure with BPS in 2017-28 school year as Director of Human Capital Strategy. He then pursued enrollment in the Lynch Leadership Academy and was most recently a Leadership Fellow at the Harvard Kent Elementary in Charlestown. Michael J. Perkins Elementary School, Maisha Rounds. Maisha Rounds began her career teaching at the elementary level in her native South Carolina. During her time in the classroom, she attained National Board Certification and was named South Carolina Teacher of the Year. Welcome, welcome here to Bos, welcome to Boston. Pauline A. Shaw Elementary, Ashley Davis. Since her spring of 2019, Ms. Davis has led the P.A. Shaw as interim principal. A lifelong learner, Ms. Davis has been the Principal Fellow through the Lynch Leadership Academy at the P.A. Shaw Elementary School. James P. Timmeltie High School, or Middle School. It says Middle School. I don't know why I said High School. Already I'm merging the seven through twelve. Look at it, it's seamless. Mr. Milen has spent the last eight years as educator, most recently serving as acting middle school principal at Prospect Hill Academy Charter School in Cambridge. Mr. Milen is bilingual and previously worked as a Spanish teacher in Indianapolis Public Schools before serving as both the Spanish Coordinator and World Language Coordinator at Prospect Hill Academy Charter School. And last but not least, West Zone Early Learning Center, Stacia Lamond. Ms. Lamond is Massachusetts native and has been a BPS educator for the past twenty-five years. Ms. Lamond has taught a variety of academic subjects in grades one through eight, including visual arts. Most recently, she was a Grade One Inclusion Teacher at the West End ELC. Thank you. And can we give them all a warm welcome? And that's my report, Mr. Chair.
Well, thank you Superintendent and thank you once again and welcome to all our wonderful new school leaders. We wish you the best in the upcoming school year. I'll open it up now to my fellow members for questions and discussion.
I just want to, I want to thank you for organizing it around the strategic plan. It's a brilliant move. I think it's very helpful to keep us focused and getting the data that shows that we're making progress or not. So thank you for doing that.
Thank you, Dr. Coleman. Ms. Robinson?
Yes, I just want to say thank you for your report and also thank you for all that's gone on in the last week. I was able to volunteer for a couple of opportunities and would recommend it to my fellow school committee members. You get a very different perspective about what really goes on day-to-day when you go door knocking. And then I spent half an afternoon answering the phones in the Transportation Center, which is extraordinarily complicated. I say kudos to all of the folks who have to do this. But I really feel that we are so under-resourced in that area because I was doing it on the Wednesday when we were just dealing with charter schools and there were a number of issues and long waits. And so I can only imagine what occurred when we added Thursday on in all of our own schools, et cetera. So I'm not quite sure what we can do to both help shorten the waits for parents, but to do, as I was saying, better communication so that people can have realistic expectations on what can happen. You know, also the same thing with going to schools on the first day. And unfortunately encountered a family who had done all the right things, that had gotten their transfer papers. But when they arrived at their new school, it wasn't on their new school's book. They were still at the old school. And it was a question of whether, could they stay in the new school? If they had to go back to the old school, did they need to come here? So I feel like we've got to, again, figure out how to, what's the drop dead date by which a transfer can occur? And what does a family do? Because I know many of our families don't have transportation and the kid is there all excited to start a day. So is she marked absent? You know, is she part of the no-shows? You know, it's confusing. So I hope that we can do more to get all of this to happen correctly. But this, but I want to thank everybody in the district for knowing all of the hard work they're doing to try to get it to happen as best they can.
Thank you very much, Ms. Robinson. And thank you for making time for the re-engagement effort on the fourth. I wasn't able to make it out, but I understand from our colleagues that this is the first of many. And so we'll have a number of other opportunities for others within the district as well as on the committee to play a part and go out and try to re-engage students. And thank you as well. I didn't even know that you had taken the opportunity to answer phones this week. But it's going above and beyond. And you know, I've noticed Ms. Sullivan, Ms. Parvex in our office have done the same. And you know, everyone within balling pitching in and answering the phones during this time of need has been greatly appreciated. So thank you. Mr. O'Neil?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A couple of things. Most of the school leaders immediately left because they have school first thing tomorrow morning. I just wanted to also welcome them, welcome back. One who has stayed here this evening. We're delighted to have you back, Mr. Bott. Welcome home, as the Superintendent said. And I have to say Superintendent, as much as I get excited to hear about people joining us from other parts of the country and you know, we have a South Carolina Teacher of the Year and those type of things. What really warms my heart is when I hear ten years in the school, ten years in the system, that they were teachers or some were even BPS grads and then teaches with us for many years and then went to the Lynch Leadership Academy and then had been a Principal Fellow. And love to see that pipeline happening because I love having folks that understand the system and have been committed to it. So really appreciative that the vast majority of the folks that you put in positions of leadership were coming from within the district. So great bench strength there and the more we can do to facilitate that, that's great. On the door knocking campaign, congratulations on that. I agree with Ms. Robinson that we should keep doing it. I will mention, I ran into Ms. Lopez Burke walking in from City Year. I don't know if she's here right now. She was out knocking on doors and she said to me that she went back to City Year and said, "We need all of City Year out helping doing this," so.
She told me that just the other day and I didn't want to totally commit them by saying that yet.
Well, I did, so.
So we have a whole army out there now next, next time, which would be great.
And, and that's great. I think it's a wonderful idea. And on the transportation issues, I want to thank you for being so upfront that these are really challenges. I know it has bothered you a lot because we've spoken about it several times since school has started. And I know you were very focused on it before school started. I believe you're doing a lot. But what I really appreciate is how you were talking with parents directly about this. I followed up on one email that we received and found out that in fact you had reached out to the parent directly and spoken to him. And I haven't answered calls in the Transportation Office, but I went in earlier tonight just to kind of watch and listen and learn. And I was actually impressed by the software that the folks on the phone and they can pull up and on Google Earth, see exactly where the bus is. And so the, the software is very helpful. And I also appreciate that Mr. Hanlon had, or you did Superintendent, if there's a transportation team out here at a table right now, so for any parents who come tonight, they can get directly addressed some transportation issues. So I think you're being very proactive on it. Obviously, we have a lot of ways to go on it. But I know that it has captured your attention and dedication right from the outset. So I thank you for that.
Also, just, we have now also put it on Aspen, so that's on the parent portal. So now that parents can access it that way as well. And we are testing out and piloting a messaging, a text messaging app. So we're, we're testing that now. So we hope to use some of our technology tools to better communicate. But it's going to take a deep look to make sure, because we wouldn't want to send out confusing information and just do something rushed. We want to make sure it's actually going to work when we put in a new solution. So we'll continue to do that.
And lastly, to echo what Dean Coleman said, I do appreciate that your report to us was in the phrases of the goals that we have set.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neil, Vice Chair.
Thank you. I ditto always what Mr. O'Neil said regarding the new leaders and some of them not really new, just in new leadership positions. And seeing many, many of them reflect our student population. I do agree with the bench warming, so I appreciate that. And I do want to welcome all of the new leaders that are taking on these positions. And also, I just want to, I think it's important, I know it's been said before, but I do think it's really important to say again. In my organization, we've done those walk, walking around with the Private Industry Council. And I think we did that for a number of years. And it was a small band of people going out and knocking on doors. And I think it just says so much that you, and I ran into you that day with my daughter. I'm like, what are you doing in Mission Hill? So I, I just can't say enough thank you because I think that, that is like true leadership of showing that that is what needs to happen. Every single person in our district needs to own all students and we all need to be out there. So when you go door knocking again, I'll be able to go. But I couldn't go because I didn't have plans for my daughter. Since she transferred schools, I wasn't prepared because she hadn't decided yet. So I didn't have summer camp, so I couldn't drag her around. It would have been a long day. But I just want to say thank you so, so much for doing that, for demonstrating that leadership. And lastly, I just want to say that my daughter did transfer to a BPS school this year. And it's been lovely. I, it was just so welcoming, from the crossing guard to like people standing outside. It's so welcoming. It was a great experience. So I just want to say I'm really happy and I don't want to say the school because you know, then everybody's going to be like, it's my favorite or whatever. But I just want to say that as, you know, as we hear many, many complaints here, I do want to say that for me, it's been a really great experience. So, so thank you to, to that school and leadership. I'm sure it's not, you know, the only school in the district. And it just highlights all of our wonderful schools. So thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. And I should mention as well that with your daughter's transfer, we are now a majority board of current BPS parents, four out of the seven of us. And I know you won't brag about your school, but I'll brag about mine. You know, the Orenberger Beethoven is definitely, if, if I can be so bold, a first among equals. So I, we've, we've enjoyed our time at that school so much. And I, I know Dr. Rivera, Mr. Tron and have had the same experiences that you soon will as well. And you know, beyond that, we've got a number of alumni on the board, people that have had their children go through the schools. We've had, you know, certainly a number of different looks at the way in which Mr. O'Neil is wearing his Latin purple this evening that have seen, you know, how our schools operate from stem to stern. But having that parent experience, I think, is so critical to, to have your finger on the pulse of what's happening in our schools every day.
And I didn't make her transfer, just for the record. No, that was her choice. That was completely her choice.
Of course, and Superintendent Casellas is noting, of course, we have a current student as well at the O'Brien. And I know you've been through a few, few schools prior to the O'Brien as well, Ms. Reyes. And so that experience certainly informs the work that we do here as well.
How was school start for you, Lev?
It's been good. It's been good. Senior year, class of 2020.
Well, as we warned Mr. Rodriguez, your counterpart who sat on the Superintendent Search Committee, don't let the senior slide hit you just yet. You know, you've still got another semester of the grades that you need to submit. So good luck and I hope you're, I hope you're hard at work. I heard a few schools mentioned earlier for your college application, so good luck. So just a couple of additional announcements. Wanted to bring some folks up to date on a few of the things that we did over the summer as a committee. We did have a meeting in the middle of July, which was Superintendent Casellas's first meeting as Superintendent. And after a few short weeks, we reconvened at Harvard for a training with a number of other school boards from across the country in large urban districts. It was the advancing board. Accelerating board. Accelerating board capacity. Thank you, Mr. O'Neil. I knew it was ABC. And that was cosponsored by the Council of Great City Schools. And that really gave us an opportunity to work on, you know, our process, the way that we govern ourselves and, and the way that we go about our business and learn best practices from a number of other boards across the country. As well as senior school leaders, Superintendent Casellas joined us for that as well. And so we thank Mr. O'Neil, who played a prime role in his capacity as President-elect at the Council of Great City Schools to put that program together and make it such a success for all of us. And from that, we, we decided as a group that we needed to reconvene once again and have regular retreats as a body to talk about the work that we do in a little bit less of a rigid setting like we have up here in our, in our usual meetings. And you know, we had made a pledge a while ago to do these retreats on a quarterly basis. And we got a little bit away from that last year. We had kind of a busy year. But we certainly want to get back to that. And we had a retreat on August 28th to come together and talk a little bit about norms, about what we see as our vision for the calendar going forward and how we set the calendar on our meeting-to-meeting agendas. And here, a little bit of a preview from Superintendent Casellas. She was on the ground for, what, seven, eight weeks in an official capacity and probably close to three months at that point since her hire to say, you know, what, where are we going here and what do you see for your hundred days? So the presentation we'll have this evening from Superintendent in the district. We got a little bit of a preview of that a couple of weeks ago and we were able to give some feedback. What we're going to be doing, what we're going to be taking forward from that retreat is two things. One, we want to work on a refresh of our strategic plan, which was created in 2015 as a product of the committee in close consultation with the district. That was, there was a lot of hard work put into that document. It's, it's still a very relevant document to us. But anything that sits dormant for a few years can, deserves a second look. And so that's what we're giving it right now. And we're doing that in-house. Superintendent's leading us on that. And that's work that primarily is going to drive the conversations that the Superintendent's having over the next hundred days. So I don't want to steal the thunder on that presentation, but we're very excited to hear some of your initial thoughts and have an opportunity to talk as a group in a very informal way about how we move that forward. We'll continue going forward to have those retreats on a quarterly basis. A couple other practical items I wanted to share with folks that came out of that meeting as well. We're, we're going to be putting together some guidelines on how we appoint people to task forces and subcommittees of the committee going forward. We've had a working practice over time, but we felt it pertinent that we have something down on, on paper. So we're, we're consistent and we're passing that practice on from committee to committee. And so I've tasked Mr. Tron with that. And he's going to be putting something together for us and bringing it back to the public in sometime later this fall. Another thing that we're doing, some of you might have noticed our parliamentarian is not here this evening. Mr. Richie has agreed to reduce capacity where he's going to be telecommuting and assisting us virtually during our meetings. And as part of that role, we've been able to recapture some committee funds and put those to good use. And the use that we're, we're going to do, we're going to make out of those funds is something that our Superintendent asked us to do the minute she came to town. And we've been hearing from a number of parents over time, which is put together a policy book. Over time, historically, the policies that are passed by the school committee are maintained in hard copy in the school committee office and are available on demand. But they're not available in real-time and in digital format. And the Mass Association of School Committees provides a program for digitizing and organizing those policies. And it's a very low-cost effort. And the cost can be spread over a number of years. And so we're very happy to be able to use some of those recaptured funds to pay for a digitized online policy book that will be coming. So thank you once again to those of you that have spoken up and thank you to the Superintendent for pushing on that. We also are going to be talking about, and this will probably be something we'll bring to the next retreat, is forming a few new task forces and working groups. There have been recommendations from a number of members for- a number of members for working groups around how to create and sustain partnerships for the district, as well as creating a clear and consistent, more consistent group of outside providers around college and career readiness, as well as just the, the work that we're doing internally to, to support college and career readiness across the district. And so we'll be excited to talk about that as a committee going forward. A few of our committee members have already taken it upon themselves to try to formulate some ideas. So we'll be looking forward to hearing that and bringing that back to the public in short order and soliciting members to, to help us with that work as well. We wouldn't be what we are without the volunteers that help us in that work. Quick, couple of quick final things. I want to thank the Public Facilities Department for being so responsive. We heard from the Sumner School community in Rosendale last week. They, as many of you know, their playground was unfortunately the, the victim of arson a few years ago. And we were able to raise money, and the mayor committed funds and workforce to rebuild that playground. But the playground was unfortunately not available right at the start of school. We were waiting on a few replacement parts. But through the quick work of PFD, I was just by there on Sunday, as a matter of fact, with my kids to check out, to see if it was open. And they had workmen out there on a Sunday, putting in those replacement parts. And I was informed today by the district that that playground's now open and, and ready for use for the students. And it's a, it's a heck of a playground. If you've got kids and you're anywhere near Rosendale, they were, they're going to go nuts for this one. So, so please, thank, thank you once again to PFD. Thank you as, as well to our Facilities Department.
All hands on deck.
You got it. And we had a birthday yesterday, and I just wanted to note, happy birthday to Dr. Casellas. I love the, the paper flowers that the, the students at the clap put together for you and to welcome you to town and, and celebrate your birthday. So, hope you had a nice one.
Thank you, everybody.
Well, if there's no further discussion, I'll entertain a motion to, sorry, Mr. O'Neil.
Mr. Chair, if I may just point out, since you mentioned quite a bit about the retreat we had and the retreats that we're going to have, I, I just think it's important to point out that those are all publicly posted. They're open meetings, they were open to the public. We had members of the public there that had a chance to make public comment and give us some suggestions as well. And everyone coming up will, is obviously in accordance with open meeting.
Yes, absolutely. And, you know, I'd encourage more people to come out, because, you know, this is, I think some of the criticism that we receive from time to time with the committee is we don't have a lot of back and forth, particularly through public comment or elsewhere. And, you know, we're happy when we have an opportunity to sit at a table across from one another and, and talk about these issues and, and have a little bit of a give and take. We, we certainly want to have the opportunity for the public that's so invested in our schools as well to, to participate in that conversation. So, as nothing's further, I'll entertain a motion to receive the superintendent's report as presented.
It's approved.
Thank you, Dr. Coleman. Is there a second?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Any objection to approving the motion by unanimous consent? Hearing none, the superintendent's report is approved. Move on now to public comment. Ms. Sullivan?
Thank you, Mr. LaCanto. The public comment period is an opportunity for parents, students, and other concerned parties to make brief presentations to the school committee on pertinent school issues. Questions on specific school matters are not answered at this time. Better refer to the superintendent for a later response. Questions on specific policy matters are not answered at this time, but may be the subject of later discussion by the committee. Each speaker will have three minutes to speak, and I will remind you when you have one minute remaining, and then 30 seconds. Those who require interpretation services will receive an additional two minutes. Speakers may not reassign their time to others. Written testimony is appreciated and encouraged. Please state your name and affiliation before you begin. TV cameras will only record speakers who face the committee. We have six speakers this evening, and we'll begin with Carolyn Kane, and she'll be followed by Allison Friedman and Takeya Anthony Price.
Good evening, Ms. Kane.
Good evening. Carolyn Kane, parent and chair of Boston SpedPac. I'll be brief. I just wanted to welcome the superintendent to the first meeting that she's been at that I've also attended. But I also want to thank her for her incredible responsiveness over the summer to whatever issues have come up. We certainly know that we have work to do in several different areas, but it's just been incredibly inspiring to see how responsive someone who's responsible for so many is to so many. So, I just also want to thank the Special Education Department, Cindy Nielsen and her team, for their continued collaboration with Boston SpedPac. As you know, we are a volunteer group of parents. We have a new board in place, with myself being one of the exceptions as a hang, holdover. And it's a, it's a very reflective group of the community that we are. So I'm very happy for that. We also look forward to our first meeting with the superintendent as a board on October 7th, and beginning those conversations and helping to transition the new board into taking over for the, the whole SpedPac role, including mine, in the near future. So, thank you. Welcome, and happy birthday. Thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn.
Thank you, Ms. Kane.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Allison Friedman, and she'll be followed by Takeya Anthony Price and Reyna Horowitz.
Hi, I'm Allison Friedman, and I have two kids at the Charles Sumner Elementary School. And that playground is indeed beautiful. I was actually on the playground planning committee, and we had a vision for what we wanted, and we really did get what we wanted. It took a long time to get there, but we, we are so, so grateful. And my daughter was in kindergarten when the arson happened. She's now a fourth grader. She's only had half a year of her entire experience having a playground at school. And so just like her coming home and talking about, like, what it's like to do the run at recess is like, just amazing. So I'm really grateful for that. And in terms of like vision, we're a parent council that does have a lot of vision. And our current vision is a change in the grade dynamics of our, like, the grade configuration of our school. We would really love to add a sixth grade to the Sumner. And the primary reason for this is probably obvious, like, it's a lovely community. We all really like being there, and none of us want to leave. And, you know, it's a, it's always been like a lovely, kids have always been really happy at the school. And then we got a new principal last year, and I think the thing that she has added is a really clear standards focus in making sure that all of the classrooms are aligning and teaching the same things. And I can just see improvement, and I'm quite certain that that will show up in things like MCAS scores. And so I think it's a community that's doing a lot, that have really great things. We're also a school that offers an SEI strand, and also an inclusion strand, and also sub-separate strands for, for special ed. So we are, like, when we talk about Build BPS and which, like, we're talking about like which schools can get new buildings, and that they need to have those kinds of strands, that's, that's what we have. And so we're, we're doing what, like, the district wants us to do. And I want to just mention that I come by my, on my own, I'm sort of the scout. The parent council has talked about this a lot, and I was actually at the playground with like a whole bunch of parents over the weekend. And this was, this was like the topic of conversation. So I'm the representative, I'm sort of like the scout to come and sort of start this conversation with you. But I know that sometimes people over here and here pull parents afterwards and give them advice on where to go on whatever they're asking for. And so if someone wants to do that, I'd be glad to take some information back to my community. The other thing that I want to mention is that part of why this has suddenly become such an urgent issue for us has to do with a cascade of effects that happened because of the announcement about what was happening in Build BPS. And I want to be very clear that I think the long-term plan for Rosendale schools and BPS, and I think most parents that I've talked to think the long-term plan is excellent. So this is not a question about what schools are going to exist or like, what the plan is. It's just that when you announce a long-term plan that involves school closures, those schools are affected by being told that they're closing, right? So the Irving, like, has to have a morale issue. I've been into, I've taught into schools when they were in the process of clothing, closing. I actually didn't stay until they actually closed in either situation. And there was a reason for that. Like, I knew my job was going to go away, right? Like, any-
Ms. Friedman?
Yep.
Oh, I'm right here. I'm sorry. I'm afraid you passed your three minutes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Takeya Anthony Price, and she'll be followed by Reyna Horowitz and David Martinez.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Takeya Anthony Price. And what's the saying? If the mountain will not come to Muhammad, then Muhammad must go to the mountain. What I'm about to read is what I emailed to almost everyone on this panel and this committee, along with a whole host of people at BPS. To whom this may concern, on Tuesday, September 3rd, our oldest son, a charter school student, had not gotten off his regular school bus. His usual time of arrival is anywhere between 4:45 and 5:00 p.m. On a late day, 5:15. His bus stop for well over four-plus years has always been one block away from our home. However, on this day, the first day, for many other BPS students, his time of arrival was 8:00 p.m. For three hours, our son's whereabouts were unknown during his afternoon bus ride. When we realized that his cousin, less than five minutes away, was dropped off at her home and our son was not, that is when we believed something was terribly wrong. For the same three hours, my wife and I waited in fare on hold with BPS Transportation's hotline to just get basic information on who the bus driver was and whether he could confirm if our son had gotten off the bus at his, at his designated stop. It took Boston Police one hour to arrive to our home to tell us that they themselves, as a higher authority, have no way to contact BPS Transportation, aside from a hotline number that is given to every BPS parent at the beginning of the school year. For 45 minutes, my wife and I knocked on doors frantically asking if someone had seen our son. For 30 minutes, we were told by both Boston Police and BPS Transportation that the only way to contact a bus driver is through the dispatch system, and that they could simply not call his cellphone. For 20 minutes, through sheer panic, my father saw in both my wife's eyes and I that we were in panic and in fright. He was able to persuade BP to locate our son through the powers that may be. Within 10 minutes, our son's bus was up the street, and he was safely home. But the most important thing to note about this absolutely negligent incident is that it has been, now at this point, eight days, 192 hours. Not one person, except for one person I'm looking at right now, has addressed this publicly. The Herald, the Boston Globe does not count. Or issued an apology or expressed next steps to avoid this in the future. My wife had to actually call the school the following day. For, from everything she gathered, they didn't even know that this occurred. So based off of this ordeal, I firmly believe that the entire Boston Public School, Boston Public School Transportation, and Boston Public Police Department systems of communication are broken, or worse, never truly existed to begin with. Citywide, I'm going to speak. I'm sorry. And I'm sure the person who's behind me will have no problem with what I have to say.
Ma'am, ma'am.
I'm sorry.
Ma'am, please, give me a minute. I know you sent an email, and I know you're very upset. And we've read it all. And I would like you to read it into the record. But if you would please just make sure that you finish in a quick manner so that we can get everybody else here that's ready to speak this evening as well.
Who's next?
No, no, ma'am.
Please raise your hand if you are-
Please speak. You will, ma'am, you need to address the committee.
You want me to address the committee?
I'm giving you time to finish your report, but I would like you to do it quickly, please. Thank you.
Every year is the same. The first week or two are always the hardest. There will always be callouts, there will always be bus route mix-ups. There may even be a broken bus or two. But to have my son, and from what I understood, 20 to 30 other students that day, not dropped off until evening, and have an app, where's my school bus, not be functional, and still, to this day, is not. And have parents on hold for more than an hour to find answers is negligent. And frankly, this would not happen in Wayland. It would not happen in Braintree. It would not happen in Westwood. It happens to black and brown parents. That is problematic. And I am sure the people sitting behind me will agree. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Reyna Horowitz, and she'll be followed by David Martinez and Stephanie Gaston.
Sorry to take up your time.
No worries.
Good evening. Welcome, Superintendent-
Good evening.
Casellas and members of the Boston School Committee. My name is Reyna Aronowitz, and I serve as the interim executive director for Educators for Excellence Boston, also known as E4E Boston. We are thrilled to have the new superintendent, who has been such a strong champion for students, educators, and equity. And I wanted to take this opportunity to introduce our organization and our past and future work to you. Our organization aims to ensure educator voices are included in the conversations about policies that impact their schools. Our members are BPS teachers, paraprofessionals, school counselors, psychologists, and other passionate individuals who work to support the students of Boston. Over the past two years, E4E Boston's members have been focused on advocating for supporting student mental health and creating trauma-informed campuses. Members regularly testified in support of hiring enough mental health experts to reach the American School of Counselor Association's recommended level of one counselor for every 250 students. And thanks for mentioning in your report that you've hired some of those nurses already. I applaud the BTU and BPS for their work in recently reaching the agreement to hire enough mental health staff to reach the ratio of 1 to 200. This year, we've begun advocating for increased implementation of restorative justice in BPS. In districts across the country, restorative practices have contributed to incredible outcomes for students. Denver Public Schools saw a 50% decrease in absences. Oakland Unified School District saw graduation, graduation rates increase by 60%. And in Pittsburgh Public Schools, 69% of staff said that they had integrated restorative practices in every part of their school's culture. These results are possible here in Boston, too. One of our members, Letitia Waiters, had planned to be here tonight to share with you why this issue on restorative practices resonates with her. Unfortunately, she had an unforeseen family emergency, so my colleague David, David Martinez will share her testimony on her behalf. We urge you to heed Letitia and other educators' calls for increased social, emotional learning and mental health resources. You'll continue to see our members at these meetings during public comment period, where they will speak their truth, and share their classroom experience. So thank you for listening. Again, I want to welcome this new superintendent to Boston and urge you to continue to seek out incorporate educators' perspective into the district's decision-making process. E4E Boston educators look forward to working with you on restorative justice and other practices. Thank you for the opportunity and for everything you've done thus far for Boston students, and will continue to do this year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is David Martinez, and he'll be followed by Stephanie Gaston.
Hello, my name is David Martinez. I'm a BPS grad, went to New Mission, and I'm currently working as a rector with E4E. I'm actually attending the Sumner, so my mother works there as well. Fun fact. So I'll be reading on behalf of Letitia Waiters, and I will begin. My name is Letitia Waiters, and I'm a paraprofessional, Josiah Quincy, as well as a parent of a BPS graduate. I'd like to welcome the new superintendent, Dr. Brenda Casellas, to BPS and seek a call to action. We are in need of change in Boston. I hope that your desire for investment in our children, seeing our K-2 students walk across the stage, means investment and change. I'm here today to speak the truth about the need for more social, emotional learning practices in schools. My son, like many students, had experiences when he was younger that left him with some trauma. Due to the lack of social, emotional support and mental health staff, he did not have anyone at the school he trusted to talk to about it and work through it. When his emotions became too much to bear, he was disciplined. When someone tried to restrain him, his PTSD caused him to act negatively, which led to even more punitive discipline. It was a vicious cycle that absolutely did not work. Something needs to change. Making social, emotional learning practices like restorative justice mandatory and prioritized in BPS are essential to support student-teacher and student-student relationships and developing student agency. Teaching my son to use his words instead of restraining him would have benefited him. Having had a counselor that he could talk to about the root cause of his behavior, rather than just someone to punish him, would have benefited him. From my years working in schools, I have seen just how little priority is placed by districts on hiring mental health staff or creating campus-wide mental health plans. It is clear that what we are doing is not working, and it is time for something bold to be done. My son was ignored, then punished by this district. The world is finally talking about mental health support. Let's be proactive in Boston instead of reactive. When I was asked today, when I was asked to speak today, I was asked to share my story, which I pushed back on. A story can be made up. What I've just told you is the truth. I've spoken my truth, my son's truth, and the truth of many students who are trying to succeed- to succeed in a system that does not prioritize student mental health or creating trauma-informed spaces. Superintendent Casilius, bring change to BPS, bring action. Thank you for your time, and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Stephanie Gaston.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Stephanie Gaston. I am a 2005 BPS graduate and now a parent of a third-year-old at Up Academy Dorchester. I know that charter schools are kind of under the umbrella of Boston Public, that they are free to kind of make their own rules, but that they still are under you guys' rule, for lack of a better word. So I want to just let you all know about something that happened on Monday, Tuesday, and today at Up Academy Dorchester that I feel was very wrong and that I feel was a civil rights violation towards my son. He got into an altercation with a student who I was told has behavioral issues. This child hit my son. My son hit him back in self-defense. They both, it was broken apart. They got sent to the dean's office. They did their reflection packets. They went back to class. I picked him up at 3:30, like I do every day, or my mom. Spoke to his teacher, said that he went and got his reflection work done without an issue. He got back to class without an issue. The rest of the day was great. I didn't get any forms sent home. I didn't get any further phone call. Aside from the phone call, it was around eleven o'clock that he was in the dean's office. I had no further follow-up from anybody at the school. So as far as I knew and his teacher knew, everything was, he had, they had squashed it, everything was okay. I work at Mass General, I work seven-to-seven. So I was working yesterday, very busy. Around eleven o'clock, I saw that I had a text message from my mother. She said, "Call me immediately." I called her, and she said, "The school called me at nine o'clock and said that you need to come and pick up AJ," who was my son. They said that he is suspended based on the altercation that happened on the day before. And I said, "Well, that's strange." And so I hung up with her immediately and I called the school, and I tried to, I take that back. I hung up the phone with her and I checked my phone, just to be sure that I didn't miss a phone call or a text message, and I did not get one. But I did see that I had a voicemail from 5:30 on Monday. My phone had died at that point, but at 5:30 on a Monday, I'm at home with my son, all the important people that I need are here with me, so I wasn't pressed to charge my phone. I saw the voicemail, listened to the voicemail, it was the dean of students who said, "I want to set up a meeting with you to talk about this altercation with your son and to talk about the consequence." So when I got the message, I called back the number that she called me on, it was her personal cellphone. I called her twice, she didn't answer. I called the school, the secretary answered, tried to get her on the line, she said, "I'm busy doing detention with the middle schoolers, I can't talk to you right now." I said, "Well, you know what? My son is not in school right now. You should find somebody to cover you." Like, I'm at work right now, and I'm finding somebody to cover me so I can handle this important business, so that you can talk to me and we can get this squashed and figure out what's going on.
Thirty seconds.
She did it again. She refused to talk to me. My mother went to pick him up. She then, at this point, had held a hearing without me, without adequate notice, that there was to be a suspension hearing, without my knowledge that she was going to do this. And then decided that she was judge, jury, and executioner. She went through the facts of the case and decided that my son was to be suspended. He was also, because I was not informed of this process, he was also made to emergently leave the school. He was not a threat to the school, he was not a threat to anybody, he was not disruptive. There was no reason why, if within less than twenty-four hours from that one phone call she gave me, she could not wait to speak to me before she felt like my son couldn't return to school. I feel like it would have been definitely appropriate for him to be in school, let's say, yesterday, and for me to come up today and have the meeting and discuss what the consequence was. Now, this is not about the hitting. Right is right and wrong is wrong. This is about Up Academy and the dean of students and the principal who refused to talk to me. I asked for a phone call, she refused to talk to me. I asked her why, and went up there today, I said, "Why did you not return my phone call? Did you, did Ms. V., the dean, tell you that I needed to talk to you?"
Ms. Gaston.
Did she tell you that I needed to talk to you? She, I said, "Well, why didn't you return my phone call?" She said, "I didn't have time." I said, "If you have to stay at this school until ten o'clock to return these parents' phone calls, that is your job."
Ms. Gaston.
Yep.
Thank you for giving us your story this year, this evening. The superintendent has someone who can speak to you more about this and try to help bridge the gap here.
I've spoken with Carolyn Yonbus.
And as we've talked, ma'am, let me finish. As we've mentioned, we typically don't have a conversation up here, and we're not in the best position to respond here. Up Dorchester is not one of our direct schools, it's a Horace Mann Charter, so they do have some independence, but nevertheless, is it Mr. DePina?
They still are BPS.
Mr. DePina will speak to you.
And I'm not looking for an answer. I want the Boston Public School Committee to be aware of what's going on. You all just had a lawsuit last year with the Greater Boston Legal Service in regard to these same practices.
Thank you, Mr.
Okay, and I want you to be aware, that is September 2019, and it is still going on.
Thank you, Ms. Gaston.
That is a civil rights violation of the Fourteenth Amendment.
Thank you, Ms. Gaston.
It is a violation of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Seventy-One, what they did to my son.
Thank you, Ms. Gaston.
You're welcome.
Mr. DePina is in the rear in the tan suit.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. LaCanto. That concludes our speakers for general public comment.
Well, thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Our first action item this evening is grants for approval totaling ninety-six million, three-hundred-and-fourteen thousand, nine-hundred-and-sixty-eight dollars. I'll open it up now to questions and comments from the committee. Dr. Coleman.
A lot of very exciting work that the district is engaged in, is represented, and getting external support to do the work is very exciting. I want to start my year again, once again, about the way in which we use the information relevant to these proposals, and I want to point out that, as we're looking at the SMART goals, there's a lot of focus on process variables or lagging indicators and not enough, I think, generally consistently on the outcomes. But I want to call out a couple of the grants, doing an excellent job for really identifying what the outcomes we can expect. So I want to turn to one, the Massachusetts Expendant Learning Time Grant, where they refer to the goals and the indicators are actually, the actual type of outcomes we're looking for in the school. That was consistently through that report, the Perkins Report, the Groom, Title I Report, Title III Report, and they were very strong. Others were very, were not, we wouldn't know what the real outcomes, it was all participation rates, which is not necessarily an indication of real outcomes. I want to push us more on making sure that every grant, every SMART goal is really a SMART goal and a reasonable outcome. And so I just want to point that out, and there's good success. And then one, and then I have one question on the grant, there's so many of them, so let me get to this one. Oh, I marked it, and now I've lost it, I'm sorry. If you're not being better organized. The Title II A Improving Educator Quality Grant, and I would just like to understand why we're looking at, looking for twenty-five percent of the teachers upcoming here who self-identify as black, and forty-five percent of the teachers hired who self-identify as people of color, and why we don't have explicit Latinx goal in that. So I just, I don't have that until now, but given the issues, our population, it seems just to, you know, so my biracial kids would be teachers of color, right? So, couldn't I say that?
Ms. Anu Giant, our federal and state grants coordinator, can speak to that.
So, that's actually not an answer I can provide. I do manage Title II, but I think Emily Castlebach would be the best person to respond to, and I think they've gone to get her if you want to respond right away.
There's a lot, and I'm a broad speaker, I don't need a response right now, but maybe later, but I don't need, it's not a crisis, I just want to point that out as a process variable.
And with the SMART goals, we have been working with every program manager when they submit their grants, so we'll do a better job of that. There are some, like the Small Donations Grant and things like that, that are new, that are varied, so we don't have specific SMART goals attached to those grants.
But there are some goals that are really big, and they're all process and curriculum, and people will, they'll be satisfied with the professional learning, which is important data, in terms of process data, but doesn't tell us how many kids will get better doing one, which is what we need.
Mr. Harden, it's my intent that, just like my comments are surrounded around the strategic goals, that once we have the strategic plan and the strategic vision, anytime we do contracting, anytime that we do projects, or we do granting, they will be tied directly to and have SMART goals to our strategic plan. So all that alignment will happen in the future. These are grants that had come through, had been worked on for months, and so we'll be sure to have that for you in the future.
I was so confident it was going to happen, I did bring that up as a possibility or criticism, it really sounds weird.
Well, it just makes sense to bring it back to the SMART goals, it really, really does, so.
But the lagging indicators, not just the meeting.
Yeah.
Well, thank you, Dr. Coleman, and thank you, Superintendent. Thank you, Ms. Giant, as well. Dr. Rivera.
Yeah, I just had a question about the Small Donations Grant, but I don't know if she stepped out. Oh, okay. So, the grant description says that this account is being created, it's not a typical, it's not a typical grant. I'm just trying to understand, like, how do we know what each individual donation would be that's gonna, under ten thousand dollars, you're gonna organize them all under this grant now?
So typically, the way we had structured before, unofficially, had been that we were doing federal and state grants, and then any private grants, for the most part, used to go to BEDF. Lately, we've been receiving a lot of private funding, funded, private funders who have given us small donations for unrestricted use. So a school may get a five-thousand-dollar donation from an anonymous donor, it just comes in via a fidelity trust, and it has an unrestricted purpose, so the school could use it for anything they want, and it doesn't even have a time limit. So the purpose of the Small Donations Grant was to just set up a kind of umbrella grant, similar to the reimbursable grant that we had brought to school committee a while ago. So this would be, so it would be varied donors, it could be an anonymous donor, like the one we got for a school recently, it could be a two-thousand-dollar cash donation, a check that arrives for another school. It's just anything that's for unrestricted use that we put under this umbrella grant. So the dollar amount that you see there is just an umbrella amount that we, it's not tied to an actual award.
Are there ever any situations where you would not accept an anonymous donation? Like, how, it just sounds, I would be uncomfortable with accepting an anonymous donation, but I'm not sure how this works, so, like, how would we know?
So this is very new to us, because typically, I think it did go a lot more to BEDF than it did to us. I think with all the scrutiny around student activity accounts and, you know, with the IRS audit, a lot more people prefer to send it here to our BPS financial system, but rather than treat it, because it isn't a specific grant, so the way our structure works within our financial system right now is it is, each one gets a unique grant number. So this seemed like a better way to funnel those kind of donations. So I know that that doesn't directly answer your question, but it is so new that we're not really sure yet what may come in in this way. So for now, I could give, I could bring to the school committee a list of what we have currently put under the Small Donations Grant. It's not very many yet, but we just are assuming that a lot more may come in through us rather than been going through BEDF.
Yeah, I think that would be important for us to have that information, because there could be, again, some inequalities, right, in terms of, you know, what schools are all getting anonymous donations, and, you know, just concerns, again, about transparency would be, that's what I'm really concerned about.
And what we had been providing school committee before was a grant mapping that just showed all the grants across schools and departments at the end of the year, in order to provide that transparency and see which schools and departments were getting what kind of funds. We can do the same with the Small Donations Grant and add that in there, too.
Thank you, Dr. Rivera. Ms. O'Neill.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I am going to have a question about the Comprehensive Behavioral Health Model, but before I do, I just have to make a quick comment about public comment, if that's okay, Mr. Chair?
Sure.
I know we're not supposed to respond to individual items, but in particular, we heard from three parents today, and to me, the issues they raised are symptomatic of bigger things that we've been focusing on as a committee. So the first parent who talked about the Sumner and talked about the unintended consequences of other schools going to K-6 and what may impact that enrollment, that is an issue we have brought up as a committee, and so I wanted to make sure to call that out, that the superintendent and her team are looking at that and thinking about the next level of schools to go to either K-6 or K-8, because these are the conversations going on at various school communities. And we also heard a parent talk about a discipline issue at a particular school, and again, this is something this committee's been talking a lot about, about the restorative justice practice, about lowering suspensions rates, and yes, the lawsuit that was mentioned, or potential lawsuit that was settled last year, this is an important issue, and I would appreciate it, Superintendent, if we actually do get a follow-up on that. I know you had a staff member talk to that parent, but I want to make sure this isn't symptomatic and that the message is sent to all the school leaders, that we cannot slip on this practice. I thought we made a lot of progress last year. And lastly, the parent who talked to us about the late bus, I actually did reply to you, I can't imagine the horror of three hours waiting for a child, and I know every member up here feels that. I can't imagine the pain and nervousness that you went through, and I'm sorry about that myself individually, and I'm sure my fellow members are, and I know Mr. Hanlon is waiting to speak to you, because I had voted on, and I think some other fellow members did as well, to the district to ask them to look into it, find out what happened and what is being done to correct it, and also think in terms of the suggestions that you made at the end of your email about some of those being implemented.
I love to read out loud.
Yes, but we actually did receive them, and I read them, and I know you've sent it to quite a few people, so, and we would love if you would give a copy to Ms. Sullivan to make sure that it goes in the permanent record as well. But I know Mr. Hanlon is here to talk to you about it in particular. So I just want, but that is symptomatic of, and I thank you for coming and sharing it tonight, but that is pain any parents feel when buses are late. And so, you know, it was important for us to hear that, and thank you for coming and talking about it tonight, and I'm sorry about what you went through. And so I just, Superintendent, if we could get a follow-up again as well on that, I would appreciate it, and I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, for going off, but, you know, when parents in particular...
Do you have anything about grants?
I'm sorry, yes, I do. So on the Comprehensive Behavioral Health Model, I noticed the last piece of it is to do an annual report, and I'm curious if that has been done. Are there, thank you. And by the way, this is one of the shining stars of the district. This program is something that is just phenomenal, and I appreciate the support of Children's Hospital to fund two folks, and the last part is an annual report, and so I was curious, have we done one before? Have we tracked any of this data type before that you were doing in this plan?
Absolutely. So, thank you for asking this question. We love the opportunity. We actually have a meeting tonight, which is why my partner from Children's, John, is usually here. He's at the meeting, I'm here, I'm going to the meeting a little bit late. We would love to come and tell you more about the work and give you an update, but we have an annual report that I can share that shows the outcomes and additionally can show you the new schools that have joined the cohort this year.
If you could send that along, that's great. And particularly since we invested so much in expanding this area of support for our students, as the superintendent said earlier, I would love to see some of the highlights from last year's work, because it's national-leading work, what you are doing.
Thank you. We look forward to sharing the work with the superintendent and helping to build hub school model and working with Corey Harris to do that.
Thank you, Ms. Amador.
We're going to be giving the annual wellness report, I think, at the next committee or the next one after, it's coming up. We were planning on it this one, but we were doing other things, so we'll do it coming up.
Thank you, Ms. O'Neill. Ms. Robinson.
Yes, thank you very much. I always want to say thank you to the office that writes all of these grants, because it's very impressive, every week when we come together to approve them, the amount of work that has been done. And so many of these, or all of these grants are new. So that is part of my question, is with all of the new dollars coming in, how does that impact our ongoing budget? I mean, how do we think about when we're applying for grants, what percentage of them are we expecting to receive that would offset issues in our current budget? How many of them are offering new opportunities? And then, when I look at things that, particularly in the Twenty-First Century Grants, they're often paying for overtime stipends for teachers, so my question is, is this work not already in our budget since the extended learning time is in our budget, or are we counting on a certain number of grants to help pay down some of those costs? Because sometimes it's unclear what is new money, what is needed, what's expected money, and what's on top of what we're getting. And then, again, as we look at shortfalls in school budgets, is some of this helping those shortfalls, or are they just creating new opportunities?
Well, it's both and. So we do have specific grants that go out to schools, there's specific grants for strategic purposes at the central office that all schools benefit, for instance, the hiring grants, or the recruitment grants that we've sought, or principal leadership grants are things that everybody can benefit from. So that supplements what we already currently do within the district around our own professional development or building a pipeline. So there's both and, and I think the piece that we... And I think the piece that we need to be able to better do in terms of equity, equity that Dr. Rivera was bringing up and what resources, resources go to other schools or go out centrally and locally, is develop our strategic plan, align our effort, align the grants, keep tracking of what the effort is at each site, and then put that publicly out there so that people can see where the effort is. And, and then you can see what the results are from that. And so, that's why I am urgently wanting to get the strategic plan going and get the measures and the deliverables of each one, 'cause then that informs what we actually go for, because there are grant opportunities that we have that actually I will say no to, because they don't match the strategic direction, and it becomes a distraction, or it becomes an inequity, and so, or it doesn't match what our focus is. So, you know, sometimes folks will come with a lot of money that they want to give to the district, but it's with what they want to do, rather than what the board, the school committee and the public have said what they need and want to do. So, I think that's the beauty of having a really strong strategic plan that is known and people can talk about it, 'cause then it makes it easier to go out and ask for things and to ask for partnerships and to do the all-hands-on-deck kind of approach, and to not only get the financial support, but the in-kind support and the partnerships, like a city year. You know, when they know that we have an attendance campaign, they can raise their hand and say, we'll come out and do the door knocking. Or when they know that you have a gap in digital divide, then Comcast comes up and says, well, let's partner with you on getting Wi-Fi to all your parents, 'cause that's what's on the plan. And so, I look forward to that work with the community and with all of you and then, and our parents and teachers over the next three to five months. And then we'll have all of these, this will be clear and coherent for everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Vice Chair.
And we'll have a policy book.
Get ahead of yourself.
Thank you for that response, 'cause I think that covers kind of, some of my comments were, there are a lot of exciting things. I loved seeing, like, the, the teacher STEM externship. I had a couple of suggestions. Some of the grants that I see, like, for example, on the 21st Century C L C, when looking for grants, I think it's also good to look at organizations that have a cultural and linguistic capacity and expertise. And I would encourage the district to be looking in those partnerships when we apply for grants. And the S C L grant with Boston After School and Beyond, I don't need an answer. I'm just gonna say that there was a lot of, in there about out-of-school time, but all the goals were related to in-school, and all of the dollars were going to in-school and not to out-of-school. So, I don't know if maybe it's just an oversight in this writing, and I don't need an answer now. You can just respond to me at another time, 'cause I don't want to hold up the meeting. And then I, I would just say, overall, I'm glad that you, that what you just said, because when I look at some of this, and I think we've said it before, and now it's a great opportunity since you started, is when I look at every, every time we're here and we're approving professional development, and yet we still don't have the impact that we say we want to have. And so, as, as an example, and so I love that you said that, because I think, sometimes I think, what are we fundraising for? Like, I run an organization, I know the areas, because I've done a strategic plan, and I know exactly what are the areas that I want to fundraise for. And so, for us, because that's our job and that's what we're responsible for, is not to give more work, but when we have the strategic plan is to say, you know, like, this is under goal one of the strategic plan 1A, and this is how it relates to, and I totally agree with the outcomes, because when I look at some of these, I'm like, yeah, okay, so you participated, so ditto to that. And lastly, I'm just gonna throw this bomb right in the middle of the room, going to Dr. Rivera's point, which I would like, as we move forward, to really consider, every school has different resources to fundraise, and I think there are some inequities in that, and some schools get more dollars than others. And I actually advocate for schools to actually share some of the dollars that they're raising. But I'll just drop that bomb there and leave it, and we can discuss it throughout the year, and hopefully, as we move forward in the strategic plan, we can dig a little bit more into that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. If there's no fur, no further questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion to approve the grants as presented. Thank you, Ms. O'Neil. Sounds like a second from Dr. Coleman. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Any objection to approving the grants by unanimous consent? Hearing none, the grants are approved. Okay, our final action item this evening is the BPS drinking water access policy update. You recall that at our last meeting, Ms. Catherine Walsh, who is the BPS Sustainability and Environmental Resource Manager, and PJ Priskinis, our Assistant Director for Facilities Management, presented for the committee's consideration an updated drinking water access policy. I'll open it up now to questions or further comments from the committee.
I strictly, Ms. O'Neil. I strictly compliment the progress that the district has made in this. These are obviously somewhat mine up points on the update. And I encourage, Superintendent, this is fairly new for you, but this was a huge issue a couple of years ago. It's nothing that you're not, that you don't know. I'm sure it happened in, throughout Minnesota, as it does in many of the older cities across the country. This policy, what, after it was put in place, is actually a leading policy that many other districts have followed and will be following when we make these changes. However, having said that, we still have a lot of our schools without, without tap water. And I know this is personally important to you. I know you don't like bottled water, so I look forward to hearing an update from you in the future about what we are doing to get more of our schools online as quickly as possible.
Well, thank you, Ms. O'Neil, and, you know, as you mentioned, this is a policy that we, as a district, were on the cutting edge a number of years ago in passing in response to concerns about lead in the water in our schools, and has, in fact, become a national model, as well as a, a model across Massachusetts. And, you know, we, we knew that we were out ahead of the group, but we know that, we knew that there is also more for us to learn. And so, the changes that the, the district has made here are reflective of that and continue to be held out as models for schools across Commonwealth, as, as well as across our nation. I know a number of other urban districts have called on us for advice in the wake of passing this first policy. And to your point, you know, a policy is only so good as the way in which it's applied. And so, the, the efforts through the Build BPS process, as well as our own deferred maintenance processes in the district to bring more and more schools back online, and particularly the line in this new policy that will allow drinking fountain by drinking fountain to become on, to come back online. In other words, if a school has a fountain that tests over the limit for lead, we only shut off that fountain, not the whole school, and we preserve that access to fresh water to the extent possible, and the school is a big step forward for us in making sure that that access is maintained. So, once again, I know Mr. Priskinis and Ms. Walsh aren't here this evening, but thank you to them. Oh, Ms. Walsh, hello. Thank you for your work, and thank PJ as well, and, and your colleagues in the custodial staff, by the way. The schools have looked fantastic since they've opened. There's a few floors I thought I could skate across this week, so it's been a welcome start to the school year. So, Superintendent, I don't know if you had any further thoughts, but if there's nothing further, I'll entertain a motion to approve the updated BPS drinking water access policy as presented. Thank you, Vice Chair. Is there a second? Thank you, Dr. Coleman. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neil?
Yes.
Dr. Rivera?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver Davila?
Yes.
Mr. LaCanto?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Well, thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Thank you once again to the Facilities Department for doing this urgent work. Speaking of water, I'm gonna get up and get myself a glass in a minute. But in the meantime, we're gonna move on to our first report, which is the BPS Massachusetts Interscholastic Athletic Association Membership. So, at this time, I'd like to invite BPS Athletics Director Avery Esdale to please step forward with his presentation. Thank you, Mr. Racine.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, all committee members. Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight, and welcome, and happy new academic year. I'm here tonight with a brief presentation, seeking your approval for new membership applications for the Dearborn STEM Academy, Edward M. Kennedy Health Careers Institute, and the BPS Alternative School Network. That was all covered on slide one, you see here. My second slide here just goes into some of the background information here. Main point being the focus in the membership, the focus and the, the new membership directly addresses access and future opportunity for MIA athletic participation in governance and, and compliance in the association. We currently have 24 MIA member schools, 18, 17, 18 or so host teams. The remainder participate in athletics as part of cooperative teams. And we're just looking to get these new membership pieces to further our opportunities for access to athletics. In my final slide here, I just outlined the six pieces needed to request membership with the MIA. Number five being the key point, a vote from this committee here that basically gives the MIA governance to authorize the MIA to manage interscholastic athletics for us as a district and the schools involved. So, that's my short presentation. I'll leave time for questions and anything that you may have, but that's the, the main point I'm here for tonight.
Well, thank you, Mr. Esdale, and thank you so much for continuing to open up opportunities for students to participate in athletics. And we've heard a little bit about wellness this evening, and we know certainly athletic activity is one of those indicators of students' engagement in school and provides kids with the exercise they need to help them learn and, and grow better. So, I'll open it up to our, my fellow members for any questions or comments.
Go for it.
Ms. O'Neil.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Esdale. And so, just a couple of quick questions. I, I can't miss this opportunity when you're here in front of us to just ask, do you have a sense, are we working with Playball in the middle schools now? I know we stopped and then we started.
We've been continuous. We worked with them last year. We've been working on settling on sweet spots in terms of offerings and, and what we do, but our work with them has been continuous.
Are they in all of our middle schools now?
Not in all of them. Tough, tough piece to do. Right now, we have about 32 teams that we offered last year.
Through Playball?
Yeah, through Playball. Yeah, we did 14 volleyball teams, six double dutch teams, eight baseball teams, and then four schools were able to participate in a hockey experiential and, and eventually a league, so.
Where are you trying to expand that?
Well, I, I, I think it's, it's a, it's a delicate area to deal with. I think we, we look at schools and what their opportunities have been, schools where there's the, the demand and, and the numbers, schools where there's the support and, and people that are interested in, in seeing the program be successful. And then, obviously, we, we work with Playball around the funding piece involved. So, we were able to add two new volleyball teams, I believe, last year. And given the popularity of volleyball, it's one that we want to key in on and, and look for more opportunities to expand on. But we'll have to work with Playball to, to kind of figure out where we go with that.
My understanding is they would love to continue to expand with us and make the resources available if, if we can work with them. And that brings up scholar athletes. How many high schools do we have zones in now, or are there any high schools that don't have zones at this point?
This year, there'll be 17 zones in high schools. That number's down from 19 last year, one obviously being West Roxbury. That's not there this year. And then, mutual conversation amongst the leadership at Latin School and, and at Scholar Athletes, they've withdrawn from their zone there.
What high schools don't have zones?
I mean, it's, it's as we've evolved, I think there's not a zone at, like the Dearborn. There's not a zone at, oh, I'm losing one. I could, I will have to get you a list. I'm, I'm sorry that I don't have all those.
And lastly, since this is a membership request for MIA, there was a lot of press this summer about MIA. There seems to be some real challenges going on there. And it mentioned in the article that it was thought, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, that it was thought that someone from Boston Public Schools would be joining the Board of Directors. Is that you?
Yeah, well, there's a series of articles. I think there was one article that went in depth in terms of, you know, what some of the, the key issues and pressing points were at the MIA. And then I think there was a couple of response editorials. I believe in one of the editorial responses, they highlighted that there wasn't a, a member of one of the, of our larger urban districts, Worcester, Boston, Springfield, that's represented on the Board of Directors. And, and the request that there is, there should probably be somebody there for it to be representative of everyone that they're dealing with at the MIA.
So, will you be joining the board?
I, I have not got a personal invitation. There are avenues and ways that people can become part of the, the board. And, I mean, there's also room for school committee members and principals and headmasters. And so, I think as a collective, we should look at how we identify somebody that could go and, and represent not only Boston, but urban districts.
So, how many schools with, if we approve these three, well, and I know the alternative network school is the whole range of them, but how many Boston Public Schools will now be members of MIA?
We'd have 27 members.
27 members.
Like, 27 votes. It's, yeah, I mean, it's, it's powerful.
Because it's by school by school, not by district, right?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
I, I think if we are one of the larger members of that organization, we should be really comfortable that what's going on with that organization is acceptable, that we're comfortable with the finances of it, that the management of it, that the, you know, that the controls are in place, and some serious questions were raised about it this year. So, if we have 28 organizing, 28 schools that are membership of it, we should have a voice there.
Yes, yeah.
And I would like to strongly encourage that.
Yep, and I, and I will publicly advocate that, you know, we find ways to, to get people from, from Boston involved. I think, you know, we have to be a little bit creative in how we think of it, think at, or approach it, given that we're a centralized athletics department, and, you know, we don't have 28 individual athletic directors that can go and serve in various committees. But there's ways around it. We're much more involved than we were, I think, when I started here. And we've been finding ways to make sure that we express and, and have people understand some of the differences that we deal with.
It's just that when we're the single largest member of an organization, there's a reputational risk to us if that organization has some challenges as well.
Correct, correct. I agree.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other questions, concerns?
I have just a comment.
Sure.
That, as you all know, athletics is really important to me. So, not only are we gonna be looking at talking to the community in these 100-day plans about academics, but we're also gonna be talking about athletics and arts programming, performing arts programming, visual arts, all the things that are connectedness, student engagement activities, co-curriculars. Those opportunities are part of having high-quality schools. And so, the more we can expand those pieces, the more that parents will see BPS as their first choice, which is a goal that I came in with. And so, we'll be looking to have that discussion more in-depth with our community and how we define that, and then how we resource it, Ms. Robinson, and how we put those resources equitably into our schools, Dr. Rivera, so that all kids have access. So, very, very important to us. I'm also going to be presenting soon, I have Mr. DePina working with the coaches and with our athletic office to raise the expectations for our student athletes. And so, I know I talked about this on my interview, and looking at requirements for student athletes and just what does that look like. So, we're vetting that and talking to the community and doing our due diligence right now. And I thank you for your leadership on that, Mr. Esdale. I know those are not easy conversations to be having, but it's really important that our student athletes are students first and that we set high expectations for them. So, look for that in the future.
Superintendent, I'm looking forward to getting some video of when you go out to scrimmage with one of our teams. I know you were already planning upon doing that. I won't say what sport, but I guarantee you're the first superintendent.
First Monday after November, I'll be on the ice.
I think you're the first superintendent in many years to have done that, and that's gonna be a very interesting experience. I look forward to hearing that report.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, please don't get hurt. Mr. Esdale, thank you once again for your presentation. And, you know, once again, the, the effort in particular to, to bring in kids that might not other have, not, might not have other opportunities, and that Network Nine in particular, the team at the McKinley, and adding a number of our other alternative high schools to that team, I think makes a world of difference. And, you know, I, I, I work at a higher-ed institution, and we talk all the time about retention and graduation rates and, you know, just the, the massive difference it makes when a student has some sort of- and, you know, just the, the massive difference it makes when a student has some sort of connection to their institution. And I think that's what the superintendent's speaking about, that notion of school spirit and something that focuses you. And so anything that we can do to help provide, you know, that opportunity for our students is greatly appreciated.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you again, have a good night.
Thank you too.
We'll look forward to taking action at the next meeting. We'll move on to our next report now, which is a public engagement for strategic and, excuse me, public engagement plan for strategic and implementation, implementation planning. That's a mouthful, I don't think I read that correctly. In any case, we'll hear all about it in just a moment. And as many of you know, our superintendent has been sporting her new sneakers as she crisscrosses the city, spreading the juice on her robust one-hundred-day engagement tour. Chief of Engagement, Monica Roberts, will provide more details in a moment, but first I'd like to turn it over to the superintendent for her opening comments.
Oh, it's just been so joyful to be in our school buildings and to speak to all of our parents and community members. I've been learning so much about Boston and about the Boston Public Schools. And I come home every night just excited and wake up even more excited because of what I'm seeing within our schools. And so this is a time well worth it. It's so great to get a sense of our schools, the school buildings, the facilities, meeting the people who work in our schools, who love our children and who are doing the great work of educating them. And, and then also seeing some of the gaps and being able to fill those in and know how strategically we need to focus over the next several years as we put on paper what, what is our commitment to our parents and how we're going to hold ourselves accountable. So it's good to get that work started, and Monica has been just an incredible partner in all of that in her tremendous parent engagement office from the early registrations to every day what they're doing to get our kids in schools. It's just a tremendous effort, and she's, her team and she have just been incredible partners in this process and as well as the overall superintendent's office and team putting these things together. So I just want to thank everyone from the communications staff and from my staff in the superintendent's office and the engagement office. It is a, it is a big task to visit all these schools. And then I'd like to thank all the principals who are, and teachers who are welcoming me into their classrooms, showing me around with their points of pride, and really helping me understand better their community and, and what's happening within their schools and what they're, in their programming. So I want to thank everybody here in the BPS family. I call us now a BPS family, and that's been just the joy the past couple of weeks. Outside of the transportation difficulty, I've just go home with a new spunk in my step because of all the bright faces I get to see from our children, our teachers, and, and the school personnel. So, and then the folks here at Central Office supporting them. So I'm excited to hear Monica speak about what's coming up and what's to come.
Good evening, Chairman, members of school committee. Thank you for having me here tonight. Going to quickly talk about our community engagement tour, as we love to call it. I do want to acknowledge the team that's been working on this. My office is the Community Engagement Team. Miriam Ortiz, who is our Director of Community Engagement, and I hope all of you have had the opportunity meter, is sitting in the back, and she likes to be behind the scenes doing this work, but I do want to acknowledge the work of her team. So, as you know, this tour started on August first, and really what we are trying to do is to, as this body is looking at a strategic planning process alongside the superintendent, is to provide an opportunity with our community to provide input around particularly the aspirations and priorities, but also to give us information that will help us think about what then does implementation of that plan look like on the ground but with the work of the district, as well as inform the budget process as we move forward. Our goal is to make sure we reach all of our stakeholders. We know that has been something that this body has pushed us on, and we appreciate that. We are, as we go into this process, collecting data on who's attending, who's not attending. And we're trying to reach folks in a variety of settings. So starting with the visits to schools, Dr. Casilius will visit all one-hundred-and-twenty-five schools and have an opportunity on the ground in a setting that our students, families, and staff are operating to see and hear from their perspective, some of the strengths and the challenges, and to begin to collect data that way. We are having a variety, a number of community conversations. We are going to have some regional school parent council meetings, so by neighborhood as well as some regional town halls. But in addition to this, we have been really trying to focus on population-specific meetings. So for example, we have had a number of meetings with specific ethnic groups. That has actually started our process in August, so we wanted to start there. You know, that is often where we have the deepest challenge in terms of gathering inputs, so we started there. We also will do some youth-led conversations. We had an offer for the Boston Debate League, I think, at your retreat to have some meetings. VSAC is going to be hosting meetings alongside some of the community groups. We are having partner gatherings, also working with our collective bargaining partners, having focus groups with them. We really want to make sure all those voices are included. In addition, every central office and department will be meeting with the superintendent. We plan to have some central office brown bag lunches so that we have both the inside-outside voices. And of course, we are not forgetting higher ed and our business community because we know they are part of our stakeholder group too. And our, at the end of this, in addition to the input that we're getting to help focus the strategic plan and implementation and budget, we really want everyone to walk away with an understanding about what role they play. We're talking about having all hands on deck. So what is the role that all of our stakeholders play as we're trying to educate our students? And we hope to do that in this process. So this is our timeline. Now through December, we're going to be focusing on gathering feedback. In December, we hope to release a draft strategic plan and have a thirty-day review process, review and comment process by the public, which will then allow us to inform all final plans. While this timeline shows the work that will take place starting this month of January, this process again started in August. Prior to the start of school, Dr. Casilius visited eighteen schools and held thirty-five community meetings, which included nonprofit partners, advocacy groups, clergy, philanthropic organizations, business and governmental offices. Additionally, she attended a number of community events just to connect with folks and to hear things. And always there's someone from my office taking notes, so we're gathering all of the data that we're getting, and able to really get themes as we're going along. Since school started on September fifth, which was last week, Dr. Casilius visited fourteen schools. So we can see we are moving and held two community meetings. So today, we've had thirty-two school visits and thirty-seven community meetings. Some of the feedback that we've heard, one of which you heard tonight, is really about Build BPS. How are we moving forward with that? What would that look like particularly for the addition of sixth grades in our elementary schools? We have heard about the diversity and representation. And as we hire our educators and our school leaders and central office, that has been a theme that's come up several times. Having better high school options for families has come up, increasing exam school access, dual language and immersion programs. Expansion across our schools has come up. Partnership and collaboration with our nonprofit partners, alumni and business community, has been something that we've heard, how we are rallying around our schools together. And then our communications has, has been something that has come up, how are we diversifying our, our communications? We've been collecting a lot of feedback as we've been going along as to what radio stations, what newspapers, where do you get your data? Folks have been very helpful in providing that, and that's been passed on to our communications team who's already starting to use that. So as we are doing our outreach and we're trying to make sure our community is informed, they're using that data for that purpose. And lastly, there have been requests for increased mental health services and academic support by, by a number of our communities. So as we have our community conversations, there are five areas that will be asking folks to give input, primarily to give feedback on the aspirations and priorities that are currently in a strategic plan. Are these the right ones? What's, what, would you like to see what's missing? To really think about what does that mean in terms of the opportunities, services, and programs that would then be in place across our building? So what does that look like in terms of high-quality schools? And how do we, as a district, become parents' first choice? We know we are looking to bring people back into the district, and so what does it take for us to do that? As well as part of that is earning and securing the trust of, of our stakeholders. And then lastly, one of the questions that you asked us to add was thinking about what does the meaningful engagement look like for our families in the classroom, at the school level, and at the district level? So we'll be gathering that information as well. So we have meetings and visits scheduled for this week. We actually have a Charlestown East Boston, I think, School Parent Council Regional Meeting tomorrow in Charlestown. We have the, the schedule for folks who, we hope everyone will come out, so we're going to be pushing this out. Can be found at bostonpublicschools.org/engagementtour. That is bostonpublicschools.org/engagementtour. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Monica. We don't envy the superintendent's marathon ahead of her and visiting one-hundred-and-twenty-five schools by December. But we certainly support it, and we'll be right there with her along the way. I know a number of us are hoping to get out, hit a number of schools with the superintendent over the next couple of months. But, you know, as we talked about it a couple of times this evening, this really dovetails nicely with our revisiting of the strategic plan for the district and an opportunity to get out there and talk to the district on a number of fronts, excuse me, the public on a number of fronts. Build BPS, the opportunity and achievement gaps that we're trying to close around our high schools, any number of big-ticket items that, you know, have been us pushing boulders up the hill for a number of years now, and we really need to get the community rallied around. So I'm very excited for this, and I'm anxious to hear from our, my fellow members, their questions and, and thoughts here. Before we do that, I do want to recognize the Chair of the Education Committee from Boston City Council, our at-large Counselor, Anissa Savi George. Thank you for joining us this evening. So open it up now, members, questions and discussions. Vice Chair, it looks like you're ready.
Yes. I am just curious about other staff being involved in this because I know you don't have a large staff. So I, I worry about how much you all are doing. Although I know you hired a Emmanuel graduate, because Emmanuel's one of the best schools in Boston, if not the best. So congratulations on that. I did run into her, so I know you have a good one there. But anyway, my point being, I hope that they'll be all, like you said, all hands on deck, so it's not just the family, you know, taking the family, Community Engagement Office that takes the role of doing that because it's really everybody, so that's all.
We do have other, the school superintendents are joining us in those meetings. We've asked city counselors to come to the meetings, the town hall meetings, to be there. We've made our schedule public. And then the communications office has been sorting, supporting the engagement office as well as the superintendent's office, so.
Yeah, in terms of like what we've seen in the past, like couple of years, which is like the cross-sector of all of you working across sectors and interdisciplinary, whatever. But I just want to make sure that it's, it's held by everybody, like all the different departments are participating and not just family and engagement.
And I can say, the executive cabinet have all been informed that we will all be participating. So we're going to be running some training to have folks help facilitate. And I think for me in particular, our community partners, our, our community-based organizations are supporting us in this effort, which is really critical as we're trying to make sure we reach all of our population. So I think about seventy percent of our meetings are co-hosted by our, our community partners.
Well, thank you, Vice Chair. Ms. Robinson.
Yes, my question is more about how are these meetings being advertised, particularly the community meetings? Because my concern is, are we getting people to attend who reflect the children who are in the district? And are we getting parents and families to attend in addition to interested community partners? Because it feels like this is an opportunity for our parents to meet you personally, as well as for us to begin to hear in general what parents are interested in.
Really good question. We've been intentional and trying to use and will be using radio media that is culturally based, community-based, and trying to get the word out, and so just trying to use every different avenue to get the word out. I have a meeting coming up with our ministerial alliance and with our faith-based community, try to get out in the churches and get it up on their announcements and within their bulletins, which I think could be really helpful and beneficial as well. So all, any way that we can get it out, obviously, it's online and out and published, shared with schools so that they know where it is, and our parent councils know when those meetings are happening with parent councils. So that's been important. I've been really surprised by the turnout so far with the meet and greets and with the community-based meetings that we've had. We've had a really good turnout so far, and we have emerging issues already that we see common throughout all of the meetings that we've been having that Monica shared a little bit about. So really, really looking forward to it.
Mr. O'Neill.
So Superintendent, I applaud your effort. I'm already getting tremendous feedback, positive feedback about your outreach during the summer. Folks that have met you in the schools that I've been in so far, the beginning of this year. Teachers are excited, school leaders are excited, parents that I've talked to are excited. So you've hit the ground running in a great way, and thank you for that. And particularly, they're noticing that you actually are listening and you're hearing them. So I applaud you for that. I would love to know if you could send us the schedule of the regional school parent council meetings and the neighborhood town meetings because I think it would be great if, if, you know, we can make it, we make it, to listen and learn as well. And yes, it's a meet and greet for you, but to both show support, that you have support of school committee members, but also that's how we learn, right? And I think it'd be helpful for us just to be in the, aware when you're there, to be in the audience. Some questions may come up that are more appropriate for school committee, but I'd, I'd love to attend some if I could. And I know you have also extended invitations to us to visit you on school, you know, join you on school visits if there were some schools that would like to join you on. But the school parent ones and the neighborhood town ones, it'd be great if we could get those schedules. And more to just be in the audience and, and listen and learn and be there and support. But I would really appreciate the opportunity to do that.
Yeah, it was really interesting. I was sharing this with the mayor. This was quite a while ago when I was just starting to frame, to frame the tour. And he, it was actually his idea to meet with the parent councils because I didn't understand the structure of the parent councils yet in the, in the Boston Public Schools. And he says, well, you, the town halls are nice, but you should first meet with the parent councils. And so we added that to, to our, to our work.
I think it's excellent. Thank you, Mr. O'Neill. Are there further questions or comments from the committee?
I'm sorry, I just have.
Oh, yes, Vice Chair, please.
Just based on what you said, I just also want to make sure, even though we're meeting with the parent councils, that's not always reflective of every school. So I think going back to Jerry's point, yeah, and I think doing, I think having the meetings with partners who are in the community is great, the faith-based, you know. And we, I know that you are very creative in, in that front, and you'll go to hair salons and laundromats and whatever. But, you know, places where people are, you know? And that's who, we were like on the same page, like, yeah. So I just want to say that, thank you.
Well, thank you, Vice Chair, and you do have an audacious schedule ahead of you. So, you know, we're looking forward to being with you once again every step of the way. I think I've already marked off, I think October first is the, the next date that I'm going to try to join you for a couple of schools. And we'll hope to hit a number more as the, the fall moves along.
Bring the joy.
That's right, bring the juice.
Bring the juice.
What kind of juice? Is it orange juice? All right. Thank you, Ms. Roberts, for your presentation, and good luck on the trail. Move on now to public comments, Ms. Sullivan.
Thank you, we have no public comment on report.
Well, thank you. And is there any new business from the membership? Dr. Rivera.
Well, just a question, I'm not sure. So for the English Language Learners Task Force, we wanted to nominate some new members. I'm not sure what the process, like the process is for that, and.
I'm sorry, I thought I had emailed you about that.
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I missed that email.
Well, in any case, we're looking to schedule a presentation and a, a nomination and vote sometime in October. And I'll be back in touch shortly on the, on the nominees themselves.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other new business? Was there new business over here?
Not really new business, but just to remind people that we had all received an institution, an invitation, sorry, from the USS Constitution Museum to set sail and ride around with them on the twentieth. And they're still looking for, for more members or other school leaders who would like to participate.
Or history teachers or social science teachers, right? It's all focused on history teachers. Very good. Thank you. Did you have something, Mr. O'Neill?
Yeah, I just, as I said earlier, but I just want to follow up again. Superintendent, if we could. Superintendent, if we could get a follow-up about the academy discipline issue, as well as some of the transportation issues that were raised, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah.
And specific in that, there were five recommendations that were made, and would love to hear just some thought, if you could just get back to us at some point on those. Thank you.
Well, that concludes our business for this evening. Our next school committee meeting will take place on Wednesday, September 25th at 6:00 PM. If there's nothing further, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved to a mood.
Sounds like unanimous consent. Good night.